Stand for the pledge, please.
Yeah.
It's like we did.
United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Mayor Morandi?
Yep.
Trustee Early?
Here.
Trustee Murphy?
Here.
Trustee Valoto?
Here.
And Trustee Miller is?
I'm sick.
She's ill.
Didn't want to contaminate us. I appreciate that. Yeah, she tried last week.
She tried last week. It didn't work.
I think, good evening, everyone. A huge crowd here tonight. We've got dignitaries, and so we'll get on with our agenda here. Tonight, we have Putnam County's District Attorney, Robert Tendy, here.
Good evening.
Good evening, and thank you for coming and offering to stop over, and I will give the floor to you, and...
Thank you.
I appreciate you coming.
My pleasure. I'm going to sit because I have a torn meniscus, and I've had it for 20 years, and today I decided to act up. Hopefully, it'll be gone by the weekend. Not the meniscus, just the tear and the pain. So, thank you for having me. I really appreciate it. I've been going around to various town boards, village boards, and just letting people know what my office does, and what we can do in certain situations, what we can do to help some people, and to talk about some of the various issues of the day that are affecting everybody in the county, and actually, in the country, in some cases. So, without any further ado, I'd just like to tell you, obviously, my name is Robert Tendy. My office phone number is 845-808-1050. That's 845-808-1050. You can call me anytime. You can also come to the office, which is at 40 Glenida Avenue in Carmel. It's 40 Glenida Avenue in Carmel. We're on the second floor. And those of you who know me know that my door is always open. You don't need an appointment to come and talk to me for any reason, or come and talk to anybody in my staff for any reason. A lot of people need some guidance on legal issues sometimes involving, not as a defense attorney, but some people may be victims of crimes, and they don't know where to turn. And if you really don't know where to turn, you're not sure what to do, please don't hesitate to contact my office or call me. Some of the things we're doing, if you are a victim of a crime, you should immediately contact your local police department, or the sheriff's office, or the state troopers. Although, I have heard, because some people just have different feelings about different organizations, some people don't feel comfortable coming to my group, my office. Some people, we've got the sheriff here tonight, some people don't feel comfortable going to the sheriff's office, for whatever reasons. It might just be psychological. But if you're a victim of a crime, contact some law enforcement agency. If you feel uncomfortable going to an actual police department, then come to my office. We have investigators. You can talk to me. You can talk to one of my assistants. You can talk to my secretary. And sometimes, the information that you give us leads to a really good criminal investigation. A while back, there was a major heroin bust in the county, and that started as a result of an anonymous tip. We have a lot of cases that are started by anonymous tips, by people coming in and saying, "I think I might have seen something in my neighborhood. Maybe this house, I think it might be involved in drug-related activity. I think maybe some kids might be abused. I'm not sure." Let us know. We will, more often than not, actually all the time, will contact the sheriff's office, and they'll start looking into it, and they'll find out if there's something going on. So, please, don't hesitate to contact us for anything like that. If you think you're a victim of a crime, or you think you've seen a crime, or you're not even sure, don't hesitate to call us. If you feel as if you're a victim of a crime, and you come to my office, sometimes, actually, it just happened Thursday, last Thursday, I met a gentleman who thought he was the victim of a crime, and he may be the victim of some type of a civil rights violation, but I had to inform him that there's been no crime committed here. You may wish to speak to an attorney, to consult with an attorney regarding a possible civil rights violation. I don't offer any opinions as to whether he has a case, but we'll point you in the right direction if we have to, if it's necessary. My office will come to any of your organizations, any of your school board meetings, any business association meetings, if you have anything you want us to discuss regarding anything in the law, anything in your community that you think might be related to the law, or even tangentially related, please don't hesitate to ask us. We love to do stuff like that. The biggest problem in the county, the biggest problem in the country, is opioid abuse and drug abuse of all kinds. It's a really, really big problem. Everybody knows this. I'm not breaking any new ground here. But I do want to tell you that we are, my office, the sheriff's office, Cold Spring PD, we really are constantly trying to talk about this. We want to let people, we want to bring it right into your face, so to speak. I'm here tonight to tell you something. The message I'm giving you tonight has not a lot to do with law enforcement, but it has to do with things I've seen as a citizen, as a defense attorney, as a district attorney. And the main thing I want to tell all of you is that if you, or somebody you know, or a relative, if you have an addiction of any sort, be it a severe alcohol addiction, a severe drug addiction, if you can't solve it yourself, if you can't stop the addiction yourself, that's a disease, all right? If you have a problem that's affecting your health, and you can't do anything about it by yourself, you need professional help, you need a doctor of sorts. So, it's like, if you have cancer, you're going to go to a cancer specialist. If you have a kidney disease, you're going to go to a kidney specialist. If you've got an addiction to drugs or alcohol, and you can't fix it yourself, you've got to see a specialist. So, it's a disease. There's no shame in it. You wouldn't be ashamed to tell somebody you've got cancer. You wouldn't be ashamed to tell somebody you've got the flu. Don't be ashamed to tell somebody you've got an addiction. We're way past that, all right? This is the 21st century now. We're way past that mindset. You need help, and there are a lot of people, a lot of doctors, a lot of therapists, a lot of psychologists, a lot of people, a lot of organizations that can help you. And in fact, I've got a list of a bunch of organizations here, and I'll leave it with the village trustees. Perhaps you could put it on your website, all the addresses, and you can link to them if you want, or you can put it on, maybe you can put it on a TV scroll or something, but I'll leave this with you. We have Arms Acres in our county, Drug Crisis in our backyard, the Prevention Council of Putnam, Cove Care Center, St. Christopher's Inn, Walter Hoving Home, Putnam County Crisis Line, Putnam County CARES. There's so many organizations in this county, and this is just some of them, that exist to help people who are addicted to alcohol or drugs. So, I'll leave this with you folks here tonight, and perhaps you can somehow post it somewhere, or on your website or something. It would be very helpful. There's no shame in being an addict. There's no shame in being an addict. You need help, and there are a lot of organizations, and my office, and the sheriff's office, and the Cold Spring PD. We don't get a get-big kick out of putting addicts in jail, all right? That's not what we're about. That's the old days. We want to help you. And if you come to our office and tell us you have a problem, we will put you in the right direction. So, please, don't be ashamed of it anymore. Talk about it. Parents, if you have kids who you think have a drug problem, if you don't know who to turn to, if you don't know what to do, you can come to my office. But I've always said, and I really believe this, if somebody in your family has a drug problem or an alcohol problem, you'd be better off going out in the middle of the street and screaming it to the sky, and letting everybody hear it, than keeping it quiet, and keeping it to yourself, and trying to deal with it by yourself. Tell everybody. It's the same as telling somebody you've got a torn meniscus. Tell people. Don't try to hide it. That's what leads to a lot of the down-the-road problems. Let people know, right? You know, my son's got this problem. Tell your neighbor. Maybe they'll say, "Hey, Jimmy, you've got this problem. You've got to get to a doctor." Or just start talking about it. Take the stigma away, and start talking about it. So, that's the main message I wanted to say about the opioid and substance abuse problems tonight. We've got a lot of law enforcement agents here tonight who can tell you the same thing, and certainly, a lot more, but that's the one message I wanted to get across tonight. Another thing I wanted to talk to you about is, very briefly, synthetic marijuana is around. It's been around, but the last several months, we've seen some cases involving it. It's not really synthetic marijuana. It's marijuana that's laced with stuff, usually acetone, and a lot of poisons, and a lot of junk. And it actually can make you hallucinate. It can make you paranoid on a permanent basis. If it's strong enough, it can create psychosis. It can last for weeks. It can last for days. It can last for months. So, look, you're not supposed to smoke pot. It's illegal, unless it's for medicinal purposes. If you're smoking marijuana, please, this is going to sound weird coming from a district attorney, but it's important because the synthetic stuff is really dangerous. Please, know what you're smoking. At least do that. I'm not telling you to smoke it. You're not supposed to. But the synthetic stuff, there was a case just several months ago where we had three kids in a town in our county who had some real serious problems as a result of thinking they were just smoking marijuana. They're young kids, so you've got to be really careful. Last, but certainly not least, if you're a victim of a crime, we, my office, sheriff's office, not the law enforcement agents in our county, if you're a victim of a crime, we don't ask you what your immigration status is. So, please, spread the word. We're concerned with finding out who's victimizing you, finding that person, and dealing with that person appropriately in the legal system. So, I want to repeat it again. If you're a victim of a crime, we are not concerned with your immigration status. We're concerned with you helping us find the person who's victimizing you. Now, having said that, if you're victimizing someone, and you get arrested, then we're really concerned about your immigration status. But that's going to be your problem, not ours. So, again, I want to thank you for having me here tonight. I don't think I've ever been to one. I've been to town board meetings for the last 14 years, but I've never been here. So, I apologize for the late arrival, but it's very nice to be here. I greatly appreciate it.
Thank you.
Happy Saint Valentine's Day.
Thank you for having us.
One question. I think, you know, just doing a little research on the data, and 20% of your cases that come across are DWI-related. It seems like we've really focused on opioids, but I would think that it seems like DWIs and alcohol-related problems and deaths are still an epidemic as widespread as opioids. So...
Absolutely.
So, where do you rate that? Or it seems like that's getting lost, and it's kind of just something we're accepting now. I know you don't accept it, but...
No, we're not accepting it.
The focus seems to be on opioids, and not on the deaths and tragedies caused from alcohol.
Actually, Mayor, I think that's an excellent point. I do think that alcohol abuse, which I mentioned tonight, it is part of an addiction. It is an addiction, but I do, I think you're right. It does get short shrift. We are starting, actually, not starting. We've been having people who have serious alcohol problems who have been arrested. We've been accepting them into drug treatment court in Putnam County. So, that's something we're doing quite a bit more of, that we didn't really do in the past. We take, well, this isn't really in the realm of treatment. We do it with drugs, too. Asset forfeiture is a big part of our dealing with alcohol-related driving incidents. We forfeit cars, and forfeit the money for the cars, or we forfeit whatever we can that's in the car. So, from the standpoint of being tough on people who are driving drunk, we do want you to get the help you need, but everybody should know that if you're driving drunk, and it's your second conviction, we're going to take your car. It's an instrumentality of a crime, and a lot of our asset forfeiture money comes from that. But yes, I think it's a very valid point that the drug problem, although I was speaking to, I can't remember the nurse. It was a nurse in a hospital in Connecticut. I was speaking to her Friday, and she made it very clear. I was having a conversation, and we were talking about alcohol, and she says, "Well, alcohol is a drug." And I was like, "Yeah, that's right. It is." So, you're right. It's something that should be brought to the public a lot more often. I totally agree with you. Can I raise any questions? I'm certainly willing to. Yes, sir.
You know, it's been talked about, but actually, when you describe your one input on, you know, people that have opioid indications of exposure to that, or abuse of that, or that type of marijuana, but can you give some clues as to what kind of, what would you see, what kind of behavior? Many of us are kind of familiar with the idea of driving drunk, where, you know, the person's not driving straight, and things like that. But what, just out of total ignorance, what kind of behavior, signs would you see that might be indicators there?
That's a great question, especially if you're a parent. But it really applies to anybody. But if you're a parent, if your child is suddenly, and this could be indicative of many things, because especially teenage children, sometimes just act like teenage children, and you don't know where they're at. But if they start becoming withdrawn, if their tolerance for conversation has become very short, if they get angry very easily, if they're meeting people that you've never seen before, and they're meeting them on short-term bases, those are pretty good signs that sum things up. A police officer at a meeting we had last year made a very good point. I have two cell phones over there. Though, everybody has cell phones. Every kid has a cellphone. That cellphone is a portal to a very bad place. There's a lot of bad places that come from those cell phones, and what, it's really incumbent upon parents, and it's difficult to do. And I didn't do it as a parent, and I should have, but I was fortunate. My kids just grew up okay anyway. But I was lucky. I was just lucky. You should, from the very first moment your kid gets a cellphone, establish the ground rules of that cellphone, and don't hesitate to take it away when they violate those ground rules. I have access to your phone. I get to see what you're doing on your phone. You want to have a diary in your room? That's your private diary? Here you go. Write all you want. Put a lock on it. That cellphone, I'm paying for. I'm looking at everything that's on there, and I can do, it's kind of like the probation department. And whenever I say, "Time to come in with the cellphone," you agree with the cellphone. And if you don't, guess what? You lose it for a week, or you lose it for two. You want to talk about withdrawal symptoms? You ain't seen nothing to take a cellphone from a teenager. And sometimes, they're totally innocent. Your kid might be doing nothing wrong, but if your child says, "You can't see my phone. That's my private phone," I really recommend taking it from them and say, "It's my phone. I let you use it, just like the phone in my house. I let you use it." You have to know who your kids are associating with. You really have, you really do have to be an involved parent. It's very, very important. And you have to make sure your kids are involved in good things. There's so many things I could say about that. I could go, everybody could go for days about it, but if your kids are acting strange lately, or if your spouse is coming home late a lot, suddenly, they're coming home, "I had a few too many drinks. I'm going to be at the bar a little too long. I don't want to drive now. I'll be home at 11 instead of 8," stuff like that, be alert for it, you know. Talk it out with, talk it out with anybody. If you're friends or brothers, I say this all the time, and sometimes, it brings a tear to my eye. I hope it doesn't happen now, but I can't help it. My best friend in high school died of a combination of alcohol and drugs, and he was a very talented kid, really, really smart, extremely talented musician and artist, and we all saw all the signs, but we didn't really know what to make of it. You know, we had no idea. We were like, it was a long time ago. I'm old. And by the time we realized what was happening, it was too late. And when it was too late, we just thought, "Well, he's just a jerk who doesn't want to stop drinking. He doesn't want to stop dealing with drugs. He's just an idiot." But that's not true. He was an addict, and nobody, and he didn't. Nobody knew how to help him. And he died when he was 32, when I was in law school. It broke my heart. It still does. Any other questions? Yes, sir.
The providers and purveyors of these substances, particularly the drugs, what legal steps are we taking as a county to stomp?
Funny you should say that. We were just discussing in the last couple of weeks. I like to think that we're pretty tough on drug dealers. I think we can be tougher. There's two different kinds of, well, there's a number of different kinds of drug deals, but there's basically two kinds. There's those who are rented for profit, and they don't care what they do to people, and there are those who are all poor mules, and as a defense attorney, I represented many of them, where they're addicts, and they're being used by these drug dealers to transport their drugs to various places. If you're somebody who's doing that, if you're transporting it for a seller, and we catch you, we will do everything we can to get you help, sometimes putting them in the sheriff's jail for nine to 10 months.
But aren't these the small potatoes? I mean, aren't there bigger forces behind this?
Oh, sure, there are. Absolutely.
And what are we doing about that?
Well, you know, there's a lot I could say about that. One of the things I want to say without, and I don't want this to become political, because it really isn't political, we really do have to do something about, with regards to drugs, I don't want to talk about people, but with regards to drugs, 90%, almost 94% of our drugs comes from the southern border. It's coming from Mexico. We really have to have some type of border security in that regard. It's thousands of, thousands of pounds, thousands of kilos a year are getting caught, are being interdicted. The ones that, the amount that's getting through is ridiculous. So, you know, with regards to border patrols and border security, I like to discuss it in terms of, I, there are, in our county, there are immigrants from South America who come to my office because their kids are involved in drugs, and they want to do something about it. And so, I always say, let's, if you want to talk about border security, don't talk about immigration. Don't talk about people. Talk about doing something regarding that, because so much of the dirty, really dangerous, really bad heroin is coming from south of the border. It's just a fact, and we have to do something about it. How we accomplish it is something for the feds and other people, but we really do need to talk about it in that regard.
Thank you for your answer.
Oh, I had a question.
Yes, sir.
In regard to that sort of, how does a legal pharmaceutical drug, like fentanyl, end up in an illegal street drug?
Fentanyl...
It seems to me that if that's a manufactured drug, we know who's making it in the world.
Yeah.
We know who the pharmaceutical industries are that are manufacturing that drug, yet somehow, it's getting into the heroin and killing people.
Well, a lot of the fentanyl's coming from China. It's very cheap. It's extremely financially profitable, and anybody who is lacing heroin with fentanyl, in my opinion, should be jailed for a very long time, because you're basically admitting that you don't care about killing someone, because it's going to kill you. Sheriff's deputies and many members of law enforcement, they can't even touch the stuff. If they touch it, it'll get them really sick. It's extremely potent. Fentanyl's coming, what happens, it makes, takes a route. Comes, a lot of it comes from Canada. A lot of it comes from Mexico. Most of it is manufactured in China. Then, they ship it out to various ports, so it can come in through areas that have, that are basically leaky borders.
Why would they use it? It costs a lot of money to make fentanyl. It doesn't cost a lot of money to process heroin, apparently. Why is this drug that costs more than heroin ending up in heroin?
Because dollar for dollar and pound for pound, a piece of, a piece of fentanyl, the grain of, the size of a grain of sand, is enough to kill you. So...
So, they're trying to kill us, or, but, to add to the high, I don't understand why it's ending up in there?
Because it's profitable. It's strictly profitable. It gets people high. It's profitable, and it's...
It's for the high.
But we're not talking about humanitarians here. We're talking about people who are flooding our country with heroin, and various opioids, and then mixing it with fentanyl, because it makes it more profitable. It's that simple. They don't care that they're killing people. I think we've done that for 50, 60 years now.
But I've always wondered how a pharmaceutical like that would end up in an illegal street drug, or...
It happens illegally. Same thing with opiates. It's illegal. It's illegal activity.
So, they can trace these things to the country of China, is what you're...
A lot of it comes from China, yeah. A lot of it does. Not all of it, but a lot of it.
So, the demand side is where it needs to be attacked, and because you've got to stop...
Demand side is very, very high. No question about it. We're the biggest, we're the biggest purchasers of the stuff in the world. And there's a whole bunch of reasons for that, which we don't have time for here. That's a whole symposium in a college course.
That's a social issue, not a legal.
It's a social issue. You're absolutely correct. There's a whole bunch of theories as to why that's a problem, but yeah, you're correct. So, if there are no more questions, I've taken up a lot more time than I intended to, so I apologize for that, but I think it's important, and it's nice to be here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Could you give an update on the lawsuits against pharmaceutical companies that the county's pursuing, please?
I can't give you a legal update as to what, where it is in the court system right now. I know it's in the very formative stages, but a number of states have filed a lawsuit against a number of pharmaceutical companies, actually, as many as they can, actually. It's not dissimilar to the lawsuits that were filed against the cigarette manufacturers years ago. Those of you who are old enough, and I'm one of them, you will remember in the early '90s, suddenly, everybody was being told to put their kids on various drugs. They were told, "Your kid has attention deficit. Your kid has this." And a good friend of mine, very good friend of mine, his son was one of them. Fortunately, he's okay, but I remember there were kids who were four, five, six years old, taking pills. Now, when I was growing up, we didn't take pills. We just didn't. But you're telling a four- or five-year-old kid, "Take this. You have this problem, and if you have a problem, this is going to help you get through school. This is going to help you pay more attention." And they were really over-diagnosing it, over-pushing it, because a lot of money was to be made for it. By the way, now, they're starting to do it because they know we're on to them about kids. Now, they're starting to do it with adults. Today, online, there was an ad for ADHD medication for adults now. So, when you have a bunch of kids in the early '90s, growing up, mid-'90s and later '90s, growing up from a very young age, saying, "It's okay to take that." I do it my whole life. There is no fear. There's no fear at all about taking a drug. You were brought up with it. It's like being brought up with wine, you know, in Italy. You have wine with everything. Taking a drug is something that happens. And they were so over-prescribing it, knowing what the issues were going to be with it, that they had a responsibility, and they knew this, much like the cigarette manufacturers do. And that's why they're being sued, because they basically pushed legal drugs into our kids and into our society. And what happened was, in 2005, '06, '07, '08, it was a perfect storm. All this cheap heroin started coming in. Everybody started taking prescription painkillers, and suddenly, you had a generation of kids who were taught that this is okay. And their parents were told that it's okay, and their school counselors were told that it's okay. And all of it came from the drug manufacturers.
So, is the goal of this suit being filed by the county to try to stem the tide from pharmaceutical companies into our local area?
Well, I think that, I think the tide's already washed the beach away. I think it's more of a situation where they're going to have to force some type of monetary settlement whereby the settlement funds will go to various programs, educational programs in schools, programs in counties and various towns, treatment facilities, anything that can be used to help those who are in need of interdiction, and to prevent those from becoming part of the problem. I think that's what the money would, I know that's what the money would be used for, and that they certainly bear a large responsibility for what's happening. There's no question about it. You'd have to be a fool to not think that they weren't pushing this stuff on us.
Thank you.
That's my opinion. Yes, sir.
I mean, that comment, that lawsuit sounds like it's a really important lawsuit. I'm just hearing a little bit about it, but does your office and the state of New York have sufficient resources? Because it sounds like you're essentially, as with the cigarette manufacturers, you're basically saying, "Look, you guys, you pharmaceutical companies, you're a legal company, you're a bank of law, but now, here, you're actually violating the law by pushing something that you know is being used in a way that is not safe." Maybe there's some civil definition of what I just said.
Yes.
But are there adequate resources, or could, how would resources...
Yes, there are.
...for that kind of lawsuit?
There are. You join, you join a, it's a type-of-class action lawsuit with all the various governing bodies. They all join forces together, and it's a, it's a full-scale attack on the drug manufacturers who are responsible for this. As far as legal resources, it's just, we're more than adequately covered. Absolutely. Yes.
You better run.
Yeah, better run. I really appreciate the time. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for going.
And I'm going to leave this with you. I'm going to hobble up to the front here. Thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Thanks very much for coming.
You're welcome.
Don't be a stranger. I'll buy you.
I won't be. I won't be. You'll see me, you'll, like every other tourist, when the weather's nice, you'll see me walking around, but take care, folks.
Take it. Thank you.
Have a good night.
Take care, Sheriff. Have a good night.
Sheriff Langley, were you here as the, an audience member? Would you like to say anything before we get into our agenda?
What's that?
Here as a member of the community.
Okay. Good to see you. I just wanted to extend the invitation to say a few words, if you'd like. Okay, that said, police report. I think you're falling asleep over there.
No worries.
Yeah.
Good evening, everybody. This report here is for January 2018. Basically, we had 69 reports of various crimes... Basically, we had sixty-nine reports of various crimes that I have on the printout. We had one arrest returned on the warrant and we had eighty-nine parking tickets and we had eleven moving violations. One of the arrests that was not done by the Cold Spring Police Department, now the sheriff's here, I'd like to thank him and his narcotics team, they made an arrest up above Whistling Willie's, the department building, for a person that we had our eye on for a while, that we had information on, that he was dealing some type of drugs, narcotics, and, and possibly pills. The sheriff's team came in and was doing an investigation and they, they affected an arrest a couple of weeks ago, I think it was just towards the end of, beginning of January. I just want to thank the sheriff and his team for doing outstanding work, for helping us with that. Also, we had the, this month, we had the funeral of a local NYPD officer that had passed away. And again, the sheriff's department helped us out with traffic, helped us out with anything we needed. Lieutenant McManus, Sergeant Matt Monroe, and their officers helped, helped the Cold Spring Police Department and myself out tremendously. They showed me the utmost respect and anything I needed, I, I got with not even a question being asked. So I want to thank his, his sheriff's department again for, for, you know, for the special courtesy that he showed my department. And hopefully in the future, we can work to, continue working that way. And I thank, I thank him again. With that, that's about it.
So brought that, I just wanted to extend our appreciation for, for the work you guys did that night. I'm not only the sheriff, thank you, and I definitely appreciate that. And I appreciate the professional, you know, the way everything was handled from you. I know it was a big load on you and a lot to handle with, with so many people in the area, so I think you guys did a great job. Thank you. Okay, let's go to our monthly reports, Recommission. Let's see. Recreation Commission met on Tuesday the twenty-third, right after the skate park presentation to the village board. Howl Day teacher Heidi Geeson and three students that made the presentation met with us. We outlined some of the requirements this should be worked out in the near future so we could continue the discussion in the future meetings. Review of the two thousand eighteen true green fertilization plan for the parks, tenively approved, our eight copies for approval, should be approved this week. Discussion of Budget two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen, went over list of plans for park improvements between now and the thirty-first of May. Most will be focused on Mayor's Park. Discussion of Plans for two thousand eighteen, nineteen, continuation of plans for Mayor's Park. Also have additional larger cost plans that will be sent to the village board for review and discussion. All plans are sent to the village treasurer. Estimates, quotes are in progress now. Request approval for Knights of Columbus for their annual Easter recon at the Tots Park, May, March twenty-fourth. Rain date is March thirty-first, that's at nine AM. New Rec member Ruth Anvar will be contacting Tots Park leaders to arrange a time for them to meet with us at our February meeting. There are plans for future two thousand eighteen uses of Mayor's Park, some similar to those requests in two thousand seventeen. Recreation discussed these last year and will again review to consider and recommend additional charges for certain types of park requests. As brought up in last month's report, plans to replace the trees uprooted at the riverfront are planned for the spring. Estimate for repair and placement of the pavers that surround these trees and existing willow tree are being planned and for review in the very near future. Recreation Commission will meet again Tuesday, twenty-seventh of February, two thousand eighteen. Planning Board. New Business Planning Board receives a letter dated January nineteenth from Butterfield Realty advising that their arborist from Garrison Tree was recommending removal of the Copper Beach tree as it is so far in decline that it is now beyond positive regrowth and should be removed. The chair responded on January twenty-second, asking for time to inspect the tree prior to any removal. Further action citing the approvals and recorded easement. Citing approvals and recorded easements. It is important to understand that this is not simply a private tree. This tree with condition of approval and has a recorded easement on the two encroaching residential parcels to prohibit trimming beyond that which is needed for its proper care and maintenance. At our February eighth meeting, Planning Board discussed having savatory, inspected tree and prepared a report, they performed the initial assessment as well as the preservation plan that was included in the EAF. Therefore, the board felt they were the best professional resource to provide an opinion on current status of the tree and the way forward as well as shed light on the adherence to the preservation plan. The Planning Board has consulted with the village attorney and feels it is reasonable to ask Butterfield Realty to pay for this service as the tree is part of their approval and remains a condition on that approval. Planning Board requested the village board approve this expense on the off chance that Butterfield Realty refuses to pay for this service. The board feels strongly that it needs to have this information for savatory to document proper due diligence on the handling and the condition of approval. Specifically, as the tree is highly valued aesthetic resource to the community, which is what led to its preservation and ongoing protection under the easement. The Old Business, one twenty-six Main Street, referral of Sue Costigan of SCGY Properties LLC. New approximate twenty-eight hundred and eighty-eight square foot building with a footprint of approximately fourteen hundred and forty-four square feet containing a first floor commercial space and a second floor one-bedroom apartment. Project is located in the B-one general business zone per one thirty-four-nine requiring review and approval of the Planning Board. Property is located in the historic district per chapter sixty-four, requiring review and approval by the historic district review board. A variance from the zoning board of appeals is necessary as the front yard setback will not meet the forty feet required per section one thirty-four-nine E four of the Village Code. A coordinated review of the application is underway with HDRB as lead agency. Planning Board will follow the lead agency awaiting its determination on the gating issue of demolition of the historic structure in the national district. At our February eighth meeting, Planning Board set the public hearing for March first to have a joint hearing with ZBA if they are prepared. If they are not, the Planning Board will continue with its own public hearing. Planning Board has following matters before us at the time. Thirty-four Market Street, referral of Richard Krupp for demolition and reconstruction of Cottage House at thirty-five Market Street per one thirty-four-nine B for updated site plan. The project is located in the B-one in its local historic district. HDRB is again, lead agency on the coordinated review of this application as there is very little change to the site plan. Planning Board has confirmed with village attorney that we can waive the public hearing and the residents can have input at the HDRB's public hearing on the application for demolition of historic structure in the local district, respectively Matt Francisco. Regarding the fee, I believe it was seven hundred dollars for Savatory to perform a, to come down and take a look at that tree and give a written report. So I think Matt was asking us to approve that. So I'll make a motion to approve the expenditure of seven hundred dollars in the event that Butterfield will not pay for this review or analysis.
Second motion?
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, both ayes. Zoning Board of Appeals. Current Business, one twenty-six Main Street, active application for a special permit involves the front yard setback. Workshop scheduled for February fifteenth, possible joint public hearing with the Planning Board on March first. Nine Morris Avenue, new application for a special permit and variances to the special permit code one thirty-four-seven B three to allow use of residents as offices of philanthropic institution in the R-one district. Workshop scheduled for February fifteenth. One ninety-one Main Street, inactive application for a new shed at the end of driveway and properties. Chestnut Street side are requiring setback variance. Other Business, there's recommend, recommends the appointment of Donald McDonald for the open seat for the board, another seat is expected to open in the spring. I think I'll jump ahead, number twelve was referring, this was referring to number twelve on our agenda, so let's just do that now. I have a letter from Aaron Wolf, who is the Chair of Zoning Board. Patrick, we find a letter of interest from Donald McDonald for the open seat on the ZBA. ZBA recommends Donald be appointed and we look forward to having his historical knowledge and architectural expertise on the board again. So make a motion to appoint Donald McDonald to the Zoning Board of Appeal?
Second, yeah.
Discussion? All in favor?
All right. Thanks to have him back.
Yes, nice to have Donald back. Let's see. Tom Phillips now.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
First of all, I'd like to say thank you for inviting me to your volunteer party you had last month. It was a very nice little party and I think it was well-attended. So thanks again for having us and nice invite volunteers throughout the community to attend that party. Our Planning Board had its first public hearing last month regarding the Hudson Highland Reserve property, which is up on Route nine and East Town Road and Horton Road. It's a two-hundred acre parcel property with the developers looking to put in twenty-four homes in that area, along with a forty, a question to sign with, to hold forty home courses. They had a public hearing, there was a lot of people who spoke about it at the public club meeting. The public hearing will remain open until tomorrow, Thursday, Thursday will be the next public hearing, I don't think they're gonna make any decision on it at that particular time, but the public hearing will, most likely will be closed on Thursday night. Another thing, the cell tower was proposed above Vineyard Road over the last year, year and a half or so. The zoning board of the hills denied that application. We'll see what, how it develops with that, they may decide to do another site or they could be suing the town, we don't know what's gonna happen with that. But as of right now, it's been denied, we don't know what the next steps are gonna be, there's a couple of things, a couple options that they have. Also, we're talking about the opioid epidemic, as we determined earlier this year, town board is looking for a drug coordinator. We have quite a few applicants at that and we're sorting through them, I think we're gonna make a decision probably within the next few weeks. The person, this drug coordinator is gonna work with our local agencies here, your police agent here, our local sheriff department, as well as our court system as well. I don't know exactly how it's all gonna work, but we think this is at least a step that's gonna help us a little bit here in our little community to help us fight, to combat this a little bit, at least accept the people who need help. This person's gonna be able to coordinate those helps with the, what they may need, show them the right direction and hopefully get the people, the help the people are looking for. Also, on February twenty-first, which is a week from tomorrow, we'll be holding a public hearing in Firearms Safe Storage. This will be held at the Howl Day School, we expect a lot of people to attend, so if anyone's interested in going and voicing your opinion about the safe storage, go to Safe Storage, come on up to the school on, at one twenty-first at seven-thirty. Also, last year, I, we implemented a town board, the Royal Karting voucher program, that people can go to town, town board, or to town hall, pick up a voucher and go to Royal Karting up there in Fishville, and it's a thirty-dollar value, give you about five hundred pounds of junk you want you to have in your own home. We implemented this because the last several years, we hadn't had the townwide cleanup day, so this is to help get people through that. That's all I have. Thank you.
HDRB is in the house.
When is the, are the permits available? The, for, are the vouchers available?
Yes.
Are they now available?
They've been available from the January first.
One for household.
One for household. So you've already talked a lot about the seeker projects under review, one twenty-six Main Street and thirty-five Market, so I won't go into a lot of detail about that other than to say that we are holding, hearing on the draft EAF on the twenty-first for both of those projects, starting at eight o'clock. So that's next week. Current applications continue to roll, we've got sign at sixty-six Main, fence at eleven High Street, and then changes to building two at the Butterfield site and modifications to the plan for building three at the Butterfield site. And those are all on our agenda for tomorrow night for our monthly meeting. And we did have a joint meeting with the Planning Board. The Planning Board attended our last session on one twenty-six, so I don't know, I think Matt may not have referenced that. John First has reviewed the questions that we, that you all sent to him on our behalf regarding chapter sixty-four. I have them back and need to incorporate them and the other changes that we discussed when we were in joint session. I just haven't had time yet, I may need to get that done by the end of the week and then you all can look at your scheduling and docking for a public hearing on that.
So you'll contact us when all that's kind of...
I'm hoping to get, I'm hoping to get the changes done by the end of the week.
Okay.
The seeker, the seeker reviews just take a lot of time, so I haven't had a lot of time to go back to that. But John, John got back in a timely fashion, John First. And the design standards update, update, we'll come back to after we get through this next very busy week. Keep that rolling forward. That's it from us.
Thank you very much. Fire company, do we have anything, Steve?
Nothing was submitted from the fire company. No report.
Parking committee, nothing yet. I will say that we, at our last meeting, we decided to have a, not a public hearing, but a meeting to kind of go over where we are with the, with the new residential parking permit law that was enacted and what we haven't really, haven't, haven't put into use yet. So there's been a lot of discussion and there's pros and cons of actually doing it and a lot involved, so what we decided was, or well, felt that we need some public input from it, see exactly what the people that are gonna be most affected with it would have to say about it. So we haven't set that meeting, but that'll be soon and hopefully we'll get feedback and, and know where we can go with that. It, it seems like it was a silver bullet or that's what it was kind of set up as, but really it's, it's a complicated issue. And when you do something somewhere, it's like has a domino effect and then it's affecting other people in a, the, in an adverse way, so you have to take all that into, into account. So we will set up a meeting with the public very soon, hopefully, you know, by the end of February, maybe the beginning of March at the latest, and, and see if we can move that ahead. Tree Advisory Board, do we have anything from that?
No.
I don't think so. Code update?
The Code Update Committee held two regular meetings in January. The committee began work on the five topics for phase three, which are outdoor lighting standards, evaluate steep slope standards, evaluate flooding standards, evaluate adopting ridge line protection overlay district, and green building standards. The comments received from the phase two public meeting were organized, organized and responses were prepared. The committee will spend additional time on responses before posting the comments to the village website. All materials associated with the phase two public meeting, except the comments and responses, have been forwarded to NYSERDA. At the January conference call with NYSERDA, NYSERDA verbally approved the third quarter two thousand seventeen quarterly progress report. The committee is awaiting on NYSERDA, is awaiting NYSERDA's formal approval of that report. NYSERDA has set a new contract. The contract has been partially reviewed and comments and questions, questions have been forwarded to NYSERDA. Their response has not yet been received.
Thank you. Okay. That's Greg moved out of village, I guess.
I did the whole one. I did the whole one.
He was waiting for you to say something.
Just when you thought you were done with me.
I'm just gonna, I'm not gonna shower with you, with praise.
Should've hung out a little longer.
You should've.
If we start out with the wastewater, the only thing there is to mention about that is the, the Market Street Pump Station Replacement Project. King's Capital Construction is expecting to be starting by mid to the end of March. They've got a substantial completion date of Friday, April twenty-seventh, because they were late out of the box last fall and then they lost the weather, so we, you voted to approve the change order allowing substantial completion for April twenty-seventh, so short of, you know, horrendous weather, they're gonna have to stick to that. It shouldn't be an issue. Once they get started and they get everything on site, it's not a, it's not a very big project. It is to us, but not in the scheme of things, so that's the plan for that. Water side of things, I just spoke with Mark Lekasik from Tectonic Engineering this morning. We had asked them after they presented in December, came back with a letter from you guys requesting more information, information regarding the access to the reservoir, to the dam from both sides, as to what it was going to look like, a little more than just the descriptions they had, so that you'll be able to sit down with neighboring owners to, to have a better idea. We requested that as well as some... We requested that, as well as some renderings of what the, they talked about the work on the west side of the abutment. The west side of the dam is downstream face, which is all rock now. If they use shotcrete or another method to shore that up, what's it gonna look like, that type of thing. So we asked for those things for now, and they're due by this Friday, and he said this morning that they'd be able to have that to us, so that's on schedule. And then the only other thing is, the thing that everyone knows about is the periodic discoloration in the distribution system. I don't know if you've noticed any, there's a little bit going on, going on for about a month now. You know, it all stemmed originally from the-
Why do you do that to us?
You know, because I don't live here anymore. The- You know. We've got a, you know, we've got an ancient distribution system, and yes, we cleaned the line Main Street, but everything else is ancient, and it's problematic. And when we can flush hydrants in the spring and the fall every year, that's, for all distribution systems, they qualify for twice a year. It's a preventive maintenance thing, as well as it helps to get all the, you know, there's suspended solids and dissolved solids that are in the water even after filtration that, you know, can precipitate out once they hit chlorine and they oxidize, and so there's things in the pipe that you want to get out of the pipe. It's so twice a year, we flush the hydrants. Well, for the last two years, come the fall flush, we've been low with the reservoir, so we haven't performed a fall flush. So that's two years straight where we've really only done half the amount of flushing that we would normally do, because it takes about five-hundred-and-fifty-thousand gallons over five nights to flush the system out. So we've been low. What we're looking to do now is, because this is the time of year where we have an ample supply, we're back to almost a hundred percent, we're at about ninety-nine now, is to perform a very early spring flush, and then as close, you know, into the summer before we start getting complaints again. So basically, instead of saying, you know, June and October, looking at maybe March and, you know, mid-July, late-July. So we can still get two scours in the system, and it's generally in the time of the year where we've got more supply, more water supply. So that's the plan. The downside is, at this time of year, you've got, you know, we do it overnight. We work from nine at night to four in the morning to accommodate for restaurants and everyone to not be, you know, inconvenienced during the day. But that also means that it's, you know, it's gotta not be freezing. So we're gonna look for a break in the weather. If it looks like mid to late March, then that's when we'll do it. You know, we'll get to it as soon as we can. It's gotta be safe. You know, salt trucks with that, there's just a lot of water going, and just falling behind with the salt truck isn't necessarily gonna do it. And it's just a little dangerous for the guys to be out there, so that's what we're waiting on. The, you know, the calls have not completely gone away, but they've subsided, and the system is coming back in line. But it's only gonna take a weekend morning, Saturday morning, when the flows jump up, it's, you know, it's gonna pop up again. We ran extra bacteriological sampling in January and February so far this month. And we've also run iron and manganese testing, because they're generally the culprits of, you know, contributing to color. You know, everything's come back fine, but we're not also in the homes when it's happening at its worst, you know, so we know it's worse than what we're seeing sometimes. But what we do show is that the chlorine residual, which is there for the pathogens, is there an ample supply as a residual to be able to take care of those pathogens. So as far as the health risk along those lines, it's not, or hasn't shown to be, I should say. So that's where we're at.
What is the amount of time that Central Hudson's supposed to give you in terms of Jan. snows?
With?
The poles?
The poles?
Oh, they're supposed to do UFPO, the Underground Facility Protective Organization, which is they call in, supposed to be a minimum of three business days beforehand. Yeah, the stuff on Main Street. I knew about Constitution Drive and the Boulevard, but I didn't remember seeing anything about Main Street.
Main Street, Furnace Street, Church Street, Whitehall.
Yeah, and I've told them, what they're aware of is that, you know, in our system, we own the mains, and the residents own their line from the main to the house. When they call in a mark out, we don't go out and mark out service lines, because we just don't, you know, for stuff like this, we just don't have the personnel to get out there for every. So what they've been doing, and what they did on Constitution, was they've got the hydrovac unit, which is like what we did our excavation with for that water main break. And it just puts a perfect hole straight in the ground, and they put the pole right in the ground. They're running the drill on Main Street, and that's the first I saw, it was today, and knew nothing about it, so not a great idea. Definitely not.
I had sent a note, when I found out about it today, I sent a note to Central Hudson asking that they provide, I apologize if I forgot to copy you on that. But it's three days is what we were supposed to get notice for, and to the best of my knowledge, no one was aware that they were going to be opening up the sidewalks. They're gonna be cutting the sidewalks tomorrow.
Yeah, well, they drilled through down by the beach, or they drilled right through the sidewalk.
I just saw them on Furnace and-
Yeah, no, they were down, they did the one all the way down toward the corner at Cee Co' Square, and then the first one up by Beechwood. So they've already had the order in the ground. So, I mean, you know, the thing is, even if we were to mark out service lines, you can generally mark out where the water service line is, because you're conducting a signal and you're able to get to that pipe. But the sewer line, you don't know exactly where that is. Sometimes it's within a couple of feet or a couple inches, there's sometimes. So, you know, it's just one more reason that we don't really want them just, you know, popping that order in the ground. It can really be, it has been over time, several times, not a lot, but it has happened in the past where they've hit a, you know, sewer lateral or something like that.
They're gonna be doing the corner of Furnace and Main by Harzer Building, and the corner of Church and Main in front of Magdis. And they're just gonna be doing something on Church. I don't know where on Church.
It's just, I think we, maybe it's a good idea to put a request in that when they're doing poles within the village itself, that they work with the hydrovac. They have it accessible. I know it probably costs them a little more money, but, you know, better safe than sorry.
I think we could just be informed generally.
Well, it would be nice, and I can say for a fact that I don't remember seeing one, and I check virtually every day to, you know, to look for those mark outs. And I do respond on them, that we don't mark them out, and that they, you know, we recommend the hydrovac. And that was, matter of fact, for the Constitution Drive stuff, they asked me, and once they verified that we don't own the service lines, that was when they brought the hydrovac in. Because otherwise, if we own, say, to the curb valve, they would say, well, mark it to the curb valve, and that would be all they needed. So, you know, in letting them know at that point that we don't own the service lines, that we don't mark them out, they went right ahead with the hydrovac. And that was, you know, it's more necessary on Main Street, well, it's necessary everywhere, but, you know, Main Street has a lot more going on than some of those side streets. Recommended that maybe we, you know, it was nice we used to have Tommy Martin. He was the guy in the village that you could always get a hold of from Central Hudson. I don't know who your contacts are now. But maybe we should get a name and a face to be able to deal with on stuff like this.
Marie, you wanna find out, we should draft a letter, and just like, you know, they blocked off the whole street, like Garden Street and stuff. I mean, you know, not only worrying about water lines and sewer lines, but, you know, inconveniencing streets. I don't know how long they were on Garden Street, but they had it blocked off, whatever it takes to drill through concrete.
And we'll be back again tomorrow drilling. Thanks, Greg.
Building Department, let's see, we have new building permit applications, we need seven. Building permits issued, one. Dumpster permits, one. COs issued, five. Referrals generated, none. Fees, applications and permit fees collected, three hundred dollars. Let's see, other fees, thirty, so only three hundred and thirty dollars for December. Fran, highway?
Highway Department Monthly Report, January twenty-eighteen. Garbage pickup forty-point-one-two tons. Recycle pickup eighteen-point-eight-six tons. Water main break on Campbell Street, they had to work on, and they did snowstorm plowing and cleanup on January fourth and seventeenth. Snow removal and cleanup on January eighth on Stone and Church Streets. Snow removal on January tenth at the bottom of Main and on Locust Ridge. Snow removal on January eleventh on Mountain Avenue and Chestnut Ridge. They took down the holiday decorations with the help of the Putnam County Highway Department, and they took down the decorations at the bandstand, picked up Christmas trees throughout the village, and made repairs to trucks. Oh, they did, they put a handicap sign at the municipal lot, because that municipal, the handicap parking space was painted on the floor on the, on the street. And, you know, when it snowed or got covered with ice, people didn't know that was a handicap slot. So now I understand, there's a sign there, so no excuses for saying I didn't know it was a handicap slot. And they did a trial run with Royal Karting, and that's the end of their report.
Regarding the Royal Karting, we are gonna have a meeting probably this coming week with a representative from Royal, you know, hopefully get figures, and then we'll go on from there. The public will be involved with anything. We're not making any decisions. We need, we did the run to see how long it took and what it would take. There was a ride-along, they had their driver and our men, so, you know, we don't have any numbers yet on what it would cost. There's two ways you could do it. You know, you could, well, there's three ways. You could leave it as is, or you could have people contract, you know, individually, or the village could, you know, assume that responsibility. So we'll be talking with the representative, and once we have numbers, and, you know, run them by our treasurer and see what it would cost, and we can go from there. So anyway, nothing's being done there, and once we do move anywhere, we'll have public hearings or public meetings, actually, and get people's feedback. We've already had their feedback, so I'm gonna do a full search. Mention that. Justice Court, fines, forfeited veils and civil penalties, twenty-eight-hundred-and-twenty-five dollars. Parking tickets, one thousand eight-hundred-and-twenty-four dollars. Civil fees, four-hundred-and-twenty dollars. Mandatory state surcharges, fifteen-hundred-and-ninety dollars, for a total of six thousand six-hundred-and-fifty-nine dollars. Respectfully, Judge Thomas Costello. Report, Mayor and the Board. Marie? Fran or Steve, anything?
No, not that, just Greg.
I have some information on the CCA agreement that we signed recently. Our jewel assets, I believe is the name of the company, I forget if it's assets or not, but they're administrating our CCA for us. And they are, in the middle of March approximately, they'll have, the state will have gotten back to them, and they'll, at that time, they'll have permission to use everybody in the townships that have signed up for it. Accounts with Central Hudson, and they'll be able to see how much bargaining power we have at that point. And then sometime shortly after that, before April, they'll be able to approach Town of Fishkill, us, City of Beacon, and let us know what the opportunities are for savings on the electrical. It's forthcoming.
What's with the Fishkill?
Town of Fishkill, they're part of our group all. Beacon, Town of Fishkill, and Cold Spring.
And that was part of the CCA agreement? And that was part of the CCA agreement that was signed, that was approved last, last week?
No, are you thinking of the MOU for the hydroelectric thing, or?
No, no.
They approved CCA last week.
When was it?
It was a while ago.
Yeah, that's when we chose Jewel Assets, as Phillips Town has.
And what was that comment that you made about households?
They'll have access.
They'll have access. We have, they have to get, once we've hired them as our representative?
Which, which we have signed, signed the CCA agreement, so they are representatives.
They are. Once they have that.
Which they should have.
They do. They approached New York State, and then the, New York State allows them to look at this information and use it on behalf of the villages to try and-
Who's they get the information from?
Central Hudson. So, but you have to, you can't just do that on your own. The state has to grant that, so, but they're close to having that sometime in March.
I understand, I thank you.
Okay. That's all I got.
One other thing, we went back and forth, and for years in administration, talking about the dockside property. Once again, I've brought that to life. I did send out a request for questions, and I've heard back from Marie, and I think everyone else. Fran has a few more to do, so I'd really like, if everyone has any more questions, I don't want to keep coming back to them a month later and saying, hey, we got some more questions. So if we could finalize that maybe by our next meeting, if you could get me all the questions, so I can get it to them, and then we can put that on our agenda at the end of the month and vote on that. I think last week, we tabled the number eleven, which is the approval of the Clearwater docking application. It seemed like a lot of time, or an extended period of time, but researching it, it wasn't. Question was on electricity and use and garbage. We've got responses for that. They do not hook up to our electric, and they take their garbage away, so.
What was different is that last year, they had more dockings of shorter duration. I think they had four dockings that added up to the same number of nights overnight. This time, it's three dockings with longer periods of time at the dock. So that, that's the difference. When we looked at it, it just looked like a long time.
Right.
It was longer than what we're used to seeing.
Right. So I'll make a motion to approve the docking application for the Clearwater, for the dates submitted on their application form.
Second?
Discussion, all in favor? Steve, you can take this one away if you'd like.
We already did Donald's.
What's that? Yeah, we did Donald's. Is this, the next one, I have to be honest, I didn't, I didn't get to go through this. Can we put this on?
Next week?
Next week, is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, I appreciate that, thanks. I just didn't get to it to tape.
Yeah, you just put it in there on Monday.
So if we could, we'll table that until our next meeting. Thank you.
I'll slide this thing.
Marie, do you have the batch, or who has?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to approve batch number four-four-nine-two in the amount of thirty-nine thousand five-hundred-and-twenty-nine dollars and thirteen cents.
I'll second it.
All in favor? Public comment. Yes, ma'am. Which ma'am?
So, so when Central Hudson drills the sidewalks for the, the new poles, do they damage our brand-new sidewalks? Will they repair them?
Yes, I spoke with a group of the Central Hudson representatives this afternoon. I pointed out to them that what they're doing is they are gonna be drilling into our new sidewalks that we love dearly and hate for.
Yes.
And they assured me that whatever they do, if the village is not satisfied with that, our recourse is to go back to Central Hudson. What they're doing is they're gonna be doing double wood, which is the ugliest thing you could possibly do. You may remember last, it was either last year, two thousand seventeen or two thousand sixteen, Verizon came through and did a lot of wire removals from the old wood, and put it on the new wood, and then they came through and removed the old. The procedure is, Central Hudson puts in a new pole, they move their services to the new pole. It is now up to the other utility companies who have services on the old pole to move their services from the old pole to the new pole. Once those are moved to the new pole, Central Hudson can come along and remove the old pole, leaving the old, the new, the new pole. But they can't do that until all of the utilities are moved over. It has been our observation that Verizon is not as timely as we might like in terms of moving their services. So the email that I sent to Central Hudson today asked them if there was a mandated timeframe for other utilities to move from the old wood to the new wood. And, and the implication was, once it moves, what is the timeframe for Central Hudson to remove the old wood? But tomorrow, I will be there when Central Hudson is drilling for the new wood on the corner of Furnace and the corner of Church. Just happens I'll be there tomorrow. I will not, I didn't know they were doing Garden Street today. I didn't even notice it. But they, they said they had done the Boulevard and completed it. Greg said that, and they had done Constitution. They had completed that. I saw them in Wait Hill this morning, and they said they had completed that, so.
Didn't manage to get any sewer lines. That's amazing.
And apparently, apparently what they do is they go around periodically and inspect the wood. So they showed me the pole on the corner of Church and Main. You could see it. It was rotted away. It was probably an inch or two rotted away from the- It was rotted away, it was probably an inch or two rotted away from the eastern face of the pole. It was just gone, there, there was nothing there, and that's the, the, that's the uphill side of the pole, which is all, where all the washing occurs. That's what I mean.
Got a new sidewalk there?
Yeah, that's...
Someone should've noticed that one, but they...
It's a new sidewalk there.
New sidewalk, yeah.
There's a new sidewalk on the Furnace, old Furnace Street is new sidewalk, and that whole corner is new sidewalk.
If I remember...
The rug is pretty impressive, it, it just drills a really perfect, nice hole, rid of the concrete.
Well, they were just here to do lights, though, on that block, which makes it frustrating that the time they were doing the lights, they couldn't also figure out what they needed with the poles.
If I remember when, when Mary was here, which was a couple of years ago, um, there was an issue of, as to how long we had double poles in the village, and I believe it had been years and years and years.
Yes.
And when we contacted Central Hudson, they told us it was Verizon's responsibility to get the old wood out.
Right.
So is it Verizon or is it Central Hudson?
I'm sorry, I misspoke, it's Verizon's responsibility, you're absolutely, I was incorrect. You are, you, once the, once the old pole has no utilities on it, it is Verizon's responsibility to remove the old pole, um, as opposed to Central Hudson's. Central Hudson's responsibility is to put in the new pole, move their services over, and then they have no further responsibility. The other thing I asked of Central Hudson is, you probably observed in the village, there are a lot of wires hanging down from poles, there's also a wire here, which appears to be attached to two poles, but it's low enough such that I almost feel I could run into it, so...
That's really low.
So the question to Central Hudson was, you know, I mean, you... End up with the short jokes. I'm sure people. The question to Central Hudson was, I mean, you see a wire hanging from a pole, you assume it's dangerous. Most of these are Verizon, uh, internet, they're, they're wires, which are number one, hung too low to begin with. When we were doing the streets, uh, the concrete trucks would take down lines constantly, because the Verizon wires hang too low. So the, the second question to Central Hudson, are they aware of what recourse we might have to get these hanging wires, they're unsightly and could be considered to be dangerous, so, um...
We should, uh, draft a letter to them also.
Yeah, I have, and I'll, I'll get it for you, for your signature.
Not only about this, but the poles, but the other lines around town?
Yes, yes, hanging wires, short, low, hanging wires.
Very low hanging, yes, what? Yes.
You reported, or the Rec Commission reported on replacing a tree down at the river, and I was just wondering if the Rec Commission was coordinating with the Tree Advisory Board on the...
Absolutely.
Yeah, they are.
Yep. Is...
I think they picked out the species of tree and whatever they're planting there.
They're all tagged.
Yes, they are.
Fran? On, on wires and stuff, um, just so you know, there's a meteoric, there's a guy wire on a pole that's been broken, it's on, uh, Market Street, between Main and Main.
What is it?
Uh, there's a guy wire, not the pole itself, but the, the guy wire, I guess it rusted the connection or something like that.
Where is that again?
Uh, it's, it's, uh...
On Fish Street.
It's on, uh, Market Street between Main and New, more towards Main. Close to the, uh, more towards that stop sign.
Where's it closer, is it closer to Main or to the...
It's closer to Main.
On which side of the street, east or the west?
It's east towards the tracks.
The east side?
East, yeah.
Where all the cars park?
Yeah, Ford Park, right, 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 Ford Park, yeah.
Anything else? We do need to go into executive session for a, uh, employee history, a history of a specific, uh, employee, um, we will then come out of there, we won't take any action on anything further, and adjourn as soon as we come out, so, uh, we will be going into exec session now.